Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, November the 4th. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan.
Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you. Board, you have been presented with the minutes from the previous meeting dated October the 21st. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
After taking time to read them at home, I did not find any problem with them.
With that, motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make said motion.
I second. The motion carries. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Claims for this evening, wastewater claims, four pages in the amount of $137,227.17. The floor is open for questions or comments.
Well, I do have a few questions. I noticed that we have a different format layout when we were getting it on from the Board of Works versus over. And we don't have any mention of what going on or what's being paid really over on the far right.
It's right here under descriptions.
Well, could we move it over and give... Well, what I was actually gonna say, though, is move it over so you can give more information.
It only... The program itself only allows you so much. And this is what Sandra thought this one gave the most description on it. And you'll see that on the sanitation, we use this one because it's only four pages. And if you do that for the corporation, you got about 30 pages of nothing but payroll.
Alright.
So that's the reason why I wanted to do this, so she could look at it and see if she liked it better the way we've been doing it the last few months.
Okay. The other question I have on big dog flooring.
Right.
What is that about for $8,893?
Brad, you wanna give a little description on that?
Oh, you know I do.
This is actually for flooring over at DPW.
Yeah, we're getting a new floor.
Okay.
Very exciting. We've done a little remodeling. We've got some bad walls on the outer part of the building. We've got a couple bathrooms that we're gonna make ADA compliant, and we're gonna kinda reamp the kitchen. Everything's unique to the building and original, which was 1981, so you can imagine what it looks like. What you been out there? So, we're gonna do a new floor, and we're gonna paint, try to spruce it up a little bit for the guys, make it look nicer.
Okay. Gonna have any flowers or anything? No, never mind.
I'm gonna be paid, because I kill everything out there that's flowers.
Okay. I have no other questions, Mayor.
On page two, six from the bottom is a claim for $93,247. Transfer to the fund for payments. Dana, what's that one?
That one there is money we've taken out of the sewage business for the payments to our debt.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims in the amount of $137,227.17.
Aye. Make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. There's no miscellaneous or unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none.
Ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make said motion.
I second. Meeting is adjourned at 6:06 PM. We will meet again on Monday, November the 18th, 2013, 6:00 PM in these chambers. Will be adjourned, and the Board of Works will start in 10 minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, November the 4th. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan. Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandra Seward has an excused absence this evening. Board members, you have been presented with the minutes from the previous meeting dated Monday, October the 21st, 2013. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I've read through them at home, and see no problem.
With that, a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make said motion.
I second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Move to approval of claims this evening? Board members, you have corporate claims, three pages in the amount of $766,485.43. The floor is open for questions or comments.
Yes, Mayor, I do have one. Everything seems to be in line, except I do have a question on the last page, on page three, about the... Well, fourth from the bottom. Crossroads Engineering, Main Street, for $69,124.42. Is that the final payment?
No, it is not. What we do on these, we get claims in. When I get the claim in, I mail it to the Indiana Department of Transportation. They send us back the money for this project. And then, in turn, we reimburse Crossroads after we receive the money from the state of Indiana. In saying that, our program will not let us run this whole thing over. This is actually for claim 11 and 12. It said it ended on claim 11, but it is actually for both claims.
Okay.
And what's important about this is, next year, when we do our sidewalk project, it'll be done the same way. We get the bill, we send it to the Department of Transportation, and they reimburse us, and we reimburse them. So hopefully, the public will get used to seeing what we're doing on this.
And I look down, and I really don't see anything out there.
On page two, nine from the bottom, Miracle Recreation Equipment. Tom was... Our Parks Director was able to purchase a new set of swings for the Creekside Shelter area at the city park, so another nice improvement. So if you have no other questions or concerning the corporate claims, I'll ask for a motion to approve corporate claims in the amount of $766,485.43.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. There's no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. New business this evening. First on the agenda is request for street closure, Life Bridge. At this time, I will defer to the Clerk Treasurer to read the letter into the record.
Dear Mayor Buckley, I hope this finds you well. As you are aware, Life Bridge Community does several community projects for the Beech Grove community during the year, one of which is our Baskets of Hope event, where we deliver approximately 300 Thanksgiving totes filled with food for the holiday to those in need. We anticipate nearly 100 volunteers will participate in our 10th Annual Baskets of Hope on November 17, 2013, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. During this event, we will have approximately 60 drivers who will be picking up the food. As in years past, the drivers will go west in the alley behind Life Bridge. Other volunteers will load the totes in the drivers' vehicles. The drivers will then proceed south on 7th to their destination. I am writing today to kindly request, as in years past, that you close 7th Street between Albany Street and the alley behind us, so our drivers can easily drive away from our property to deliver the food. Should the event finish prior to 4:00 PM, we are happy to remove the barricades and place them in our parking lot for pickup, if that will help. If you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to call. Thank you. Best regards, Brian Dowers, Executive Director, Life Bridge Community.
Questions from board members?
I just wanna ask the chief, we haven't had any problems in the past with closure?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I have none.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the road closure on 7th Street from Albany to Main.
I'll make said motion.
And I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Our last order of new business is a local planning agency consultant agreement between the City of Beech Grove and Crossroads Engineers. And at this time, I'll ask Trent Newport to step forward on behalf of Crossroads. Trent, good to see you this evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor.
I've got some handouts here.
Thank you. As you know, Mayor, the city, through the Board of Works, through Brad Meriwether, applied for some funding for three different, what was used to be termed "safe routes to school" type projects. Basically, projects near schools to help facilitate pedestrian kids getting to and from school in a safe manner. There was a call for projects a couple months ago. The city put in for three projects, you know, and although I think you hoped to get all three, you really thought we might be in line for one, they ended up having enough funding that they funded all the projects. So the good news was here a few weeks ago that you did get funding for all three projects. Those projects are shown on those exhibits. Basically, to summarize them, one is at the high school along Churchman, and then going down along that high school drive that tees into Churchman, down to the high school, and then some connecting sidewalks going from the high school down to the, I believe it's the elementary down there. There's a little bit of work there. But mostly, it's there on Churchman. It will be a flashing light that will be push-button activated, so it's off, dark. There's no lights on it when it's not activated, but then it's push-button activated for kids to cross there. If you're familiar with that area during schooltime, it's very busy traffic, big trucks, and yet there are a lot of kids trying to get across either to the high school or the elementary. So that's one location. The second location is at the Intermediate School down 9th Avenue. Basically, there are some sidewalks in some areas, but there's some gaps. And then, there's not really a good crossing location for all the walks, so that exhibit shows that. And then, the second page is actually down to the south on Redfern, where there are apartment complexes and some duplexes that have no sidewalks on those streets. That exhibit shows a sidewalk on the north side. We're hoping that if we have the funding available, we could do both sides, but we'll just have to see how the construction comes in. Basically, you got awarded a cap amount, you know, a certain amount. And then, if whatever we can find some savings in our design and stretch the money, we could add things like that. That project's no flashing lights or anything, just crosswalks. They already have a guard out there on 9th, I believe, that works. They would just move to the north side versus the south side there. And then, the last one is the Beech Grove Middle School, up to the north of Albany. And there's a large neighborhood to the north there that come kinda down through where the Ball Diamonds are. And this would be utilizing... This would be a couple crossing streets there, and then using the alley that's along the west side of the Ball Diamonds, and then getting them down and around the east side of that parking lot, the way that parking lot flows. You know, I know that the school was involved heavily in these. There's a lot of things that had to go into the applications, like letters out to parents and get feedback on what was needed and what was not. Matter of fact, that's why Redfern was added, because there was quite a few people saying, you know, "We have no walks down here if we're gonna have this to get people up there or to get kids up there." So there's a lot of that that was part of the application. You know, now, we have to go through and design it, follow through all the federal requirements. This is like, obviously, not to the size of Main Street, but it is like Main Street, and like Dan said, in that you have to follow the federal regulations. So this contract that we're here to talk about today is for us to do the design, to go through that, so we can then be to get to construction. The top sheet that you have here is the top dollar amount is the contract for this evening that you're being presented with. That's $75,700. That's for all survey, design, and permitting, and that has to be 100% paid by the local agency, City of Beech Grove. The funding is the next item. This is the funding you were awarded just recently through the MPO, $312,460. That funding is towards the construction of these, which we will have bids in later in 2014. And then, the next number, $78,140. Like Main Street, you have to participate in your match of the construction amount. So that's your 20% of the combined total of that and the $312 that you would pay for construction. If construction comes under, you know, we can't go over, but if construction comes under, and normally, just like Main Street, we did come under the funding amount, so hopefully, we will have some... Find some ways to save, and that $78,140 can be a lesser money. We won't know that until the end. I've shown there that... And the top one on the design, it's like Main Street, you pay it as we go. The federal funding comes into play at letting time, which, again, is gonna be fall of 2014. And then, the local share, you know, there's the large part of that, $67,940, is paid at letting, again, in the fall, and the rest of it is paid for the inspection, which is exactly what Dan was talking about. You pay that and get reimbursed. So total project cost is $466,300. But again, 312 of that is federal money. So the contract that you have in front of you is a standard boilerplate contract that we have to use. Again, it's another one of the things that we have to follow with federal highway and with NDOT. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Trent. Go ahead.
Yes, Trent. I'm kinda curious, looking at the middle school. You have going down the alley rather than going on down Detroit, another block to 13th, where it already has sidewalks. Would that save us money there?
I'm not sure it would. We looked at some of those links. Here's the... Obviously, you gotta get over to 9th... Is it 9th you're talking about?
No. I'm talking about...
Getting over to the west.
Detroit.
Yeah.
Going along the Ball Diamonds there.
Yeah.
Going just another block, and then using the sidewalks to go back into the parking lot.
Yeah, I think the concern was from the school is that the kids are gonna take the shortest route, no matter what. The other thing that they brought up is that all the traffic comes in off of that drive that's off of 9th there. And bringing the kids in there at the same time that all those cars are coming in and out was not what they... Was not the safest way to go about it. Having said that, those are all things that we could discuss with the school to see what they think. The other thing is that they thought that that walkway along the alley could be something that not only during school would get used, but during the games and so forth would be a nice feature in between the Ball Diamonds.
So I take it the residents don't have any problem with...
They...
With that going directly behind their property?
Well, I don't know. It's an alley to where, you know, obviously, it could be a street, you know, if it wanted to be. It's not improved. There are no alleys in that area, so we will keep to the east side of it, closer to the Ball Diamonds. With that, I'm not sure where that line's drawn, but it's, you know, it's not representative where we would be. We will stay to the east side of that alley to try to stay over towards the Ball Diamonds. But that was the feedback from the school. You know, the school had a large part in trying to say, "Here's where our issues are. Here's the routes we think that'll work best for us." And this is all based on what we see happening with kids today and the routes they're taking. So we relied heavily on their suggestions.
Trent, kudos to Brad and Jay at your office, and Brian, Tom, and Michael for putting this together really quick. I need to share some things with the public that has come to light on this. The total cost for the City of Beech Grove is $153,840. That will be shared equally between the school system and the city. So what I've instructed our city attorney to do is to write a MOU with the school, and then the clerk will... We will pay the bills, but the clerk will bill the city schools for this service, so...
That's terrific news. I know they were very excited about the fact that you got all three of them, and so I'm glad to hear that they're coming to the plate as well. Our contract does have to be with you, because being the LPA, you have to be the one getting the funding. But that's typical with schools, and what they've offered is pretty typical, too. A lot of schools do help out on the funding side, so that's great.
This started off with $50,000, and we're putting it up to almost a half million dollars a project. So we've really extended our financial and...
I never imagined we would get selected for all three of them. They just didn't have that many applicants that had projects that could go this fast. And this is an aggressive schedule. To be designing now and building next year with federal money doesn't happen very often. So that's why we're here so quickly for the contract, because we have to get moving quickly.
Well, it's great to see that Churchman Avenue, that section, that was a scare for everyone. I'd go down there and see the kids walking, and traffic's just flying, so that's a good plus.
Now, the construction, I know you're... We're gonna be viewing this again, because when the construction funding comes available, the construction and the inspection has to be bid out by statute. Why, Trent, and I've asked you this before, why do we not have to bid this out, this portion?
Professional services, you generally do not bid out on anything, especially it has federal funding with it. Now, you said inspection gets bid out. It actually does not get bid out. What you do have to do is you have to advertise and accept qualification proposals, not dollar proposals, but qualifications, and then go through and view those and score them and send them to NDOT. And that's because there's federal money in that portion of the project. The construction does go through the NDOT bidding system, their system, so like Main Street, you really don't have any control over it, but they have certified contractors, and you hope that you get some decent people working on the project. A project like this, I think you're gonna get people who specialize in doing these kinda sidewalks and so forth. So I think you're gonna be happy with whoever you end up with. But that goes through a bid system on NDOT. Professional services do not, and that goes for not only local agencies, but NDOT does the same way.
I'll defer to counsel. Would it be proper for us to enter into an agreement with Crossroads pursuant to this matter?
Yes, because it's, like Trent said, it's a consulting agreement, and it's... Didn't have to be publicly bid out.
Okay.
Now, obviously, the construction part of it would be, but not the consulting.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from board members?
Just one other. That section there on East Churchman, is it gonna be concrete or asphalt walkway?
That's undetermined, and it'll kinda depend on what we think cost-wise we can do. My initial reaction would be that it would be a concrete, a concrete sidewalk, but we know that there's a lot of traffic there, and so we're gonna wanna get to a wider width. And when you get to wider width, sometime asphalt becomes, you know, if you get to a width that can allow a small paver, sometimes that becomes a more cost-effective approach. I don't know that the school has said if they have a preference either way, and so that's something we need to ask. If the city has a preference either way, it'd be something we take into consideration as well. But if it were gonna be concrete, it's not gonna be a four-foot. It'll be like a six-foot walk. It'd be a wide walk.
All right. And would it have a curb or something, you know, where people...
Well, it'd be a separation between it and the road. I don't know. We don't anticipate it'll be right against the road.
Okay.
We anticipate that it'll have some separation, and that'll keep us from having to do a curb and lots of drainage stuff.
Okay.
We can kinda leave drainage the way it is and not impact it. We really wanna try to focus our dollars on the concrete and the crossings and so forth, and not have to do much with drainage if we can avoid it.
Okay.
Leave it the way it is. We'll come back with, you know, once we get going and have more preliminary plans to look at, come back with some of those decisions that the city needs to make, you know, and help us make, and we can give options and say, "Here's what we think. What do you guys think?" You know, just like any design process.
Any other questions, Counselor? All right. Thank you, Trent. At this time, I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement between the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, and acting by and through its proper officials as the LPA and Crossroads Engineering as the consultant for the purpose of project description, Beech Grove High School pedestrian access route, infrastructure improvements at South Grove Intermediate School, infrastructure improvements at Beech Grove Middle School concerning sidewalks, and the maximum amount payable under this contract shall not exceed $75,700. Need a second.
No. Well, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries. Trent will execute this, and I'll get with my attorney, and we'll get the paperwork to you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. That concludes new business. At this time, I'll ask our police chief to step forward. Chief, can you give us an update on what's going on locally? Of what you can give us?
As far as some of the more major incidents, we are still looking for the suspect that was involved in a stabbing about three or four weeks ago on 2400 Bischoff in that area. The suspect's been identified. The victim who was stabbed is out of the hospital. The other most recent incident happened after Beech Grove High School was let out. Three students were involved in a fight. One had a knife. Two of them were cut with the knife. After a few days investigation, we found out that the two that were cut with the knife were actually the ones that were the instigators, starters, and sent the information to the prosecutor. Judge signed off and has issued detention or warrants for all three. Two of them that are the ones that have the more serious felonies against them are in juvenile center, and the third one is supposed to be taken there tonight. So that incident is now in the juvenile process and in the court system, with all three of them being processed in the center.
Any problems on trick-or-treating?
No problems that we had information on, and no complaints. I thought that Friday was a very good choice due to the bad weather that came in on Thursday. I think... was a very good choice due to the, the bad weather that came in on Thursday. I think we, that turned out well. And we had additional officers out on Friday, which I think might have deterred anything that, uh, somebody thought about. But we, we did pretty good with that process.
Want to thank you, uh, chief and the department for the escort of the kids on Saturday. Morning to the band contest.
Yeah, the escort went well. We had, uh, some volunteer officers help out with the escort along with our day shift. Fire department helped out, which we appreciate. It was a nice escort all the way down to, yeah, Lucas Oil.
That was, uh, that was really nice. All right. Thank you, chief. Any questions for the police chief?
Thank you, chief.
Brad, could you come up for a minute? Can you brief us on what's going on out of DPW?
Uh, well, we just finished the, uh, lining of the sewer down on South Fourth, which went really well. We had to postpone it one day, uh, with the weather, but they resumed on Friday, got it done in two days, which was really ideal. That's what they, uh, had projected, had things gone exactly how they wanted to. So, um, no, I think there were very minimal issues and we're happy with, uh, final product. So that was a good project to get done before the end of the year. And I think we're looking forward to the next one, uh, early next year on the, uh, Belle Fontaine between eighth and ninth. So that'll be our next one. Um, everything out there's going pretty well, collecting leaves, um, got plenty of salt in case we get an early snow.
Uh, we're, how are we doing on overtime since a storm? Uh, I noticed you guys out cutting trees across streets and so forth.
Yeah. That night, we had some guys until about one or two in the morning, just opening up some roadways and alleys. Uh, and then we've spent the good part of Friday and, uh, today, little bit of overtime on, on the weekends. But, uh, they've done a nice job staying up with it, chipping up the brush and collecting what people have put out from the trees that, uh, that came down. So a lot of limbs, you know, a lot of trees split in half. Pretty good little storm that we had.
I commend the guys for coming in like that.
I've been asked about waiving fees for, uh, brush pickup as far as.
Yeah, anything that is a result of, uh, weather like that, we don't charge people. So.
Okay. Very good.
That's good. I probably got a truckload behind my house.
We'll get it.
Guys are doing great. Thank you.
Brad, thank you.
Yep.
Chief Cheshaw, you have anything for the board?
Good evening, mayor and board. Um, just give you a real quick update. We completed our hose testing for 2013 and we really took a hit this year with a hose. We, uh, lost over a thousand feet of five inch that, uh, failed and also seven hundred and fifty feet of three inch, um, and over five hundred fifty of inch and three quarter. Um, the hose failed for several different reasons. One was just the date, um, where we have to take it out of service. It was past twelve years old. And they also separated from the couplings and some actually twisted the inner liner, um, where it's unsafe to use on the fire ground. Um, so right now, our reserve engine has, uh, zero, um, supply hose on it. So we had to rob from that vehicle to put on the others. Um, we ran into several maintenance issues this month. This was a real tough month for us. Um, we had to replace brakes on engine one oh one, um, which, you know, that's rather expensive. We had several tire issues we had to take care of, um, and a couple valves stem issues to Indy Tire. They came down and, um, took care of us, got us up and running on the weekends, uh, kept us in service. We have one gentleman, uh, we just submitted paperwork into perf, uh, for pension disability. Um, we're waiting to hear back from them, um, so we can move forward to getting him off the job. I have two firefighters on light duty still. Um, so we've been running short. Um, and overtime has been an issue for us. Um, but I think we've, uh, worked with Clerk Trezor real well, um, to, you know, make sure the shifts are covered. The stations both have, uh, people and apparatus in it and we're still running. Um, if you stay around the city long at all, uh, you'll see the public safety policing fire out. It's been a busy month for us. Um, so we're out there and, and getting by. Any questions?
Yes, chief. Um, you were mentioning the hose. Some of them are dated past twelve and some probably didn't pass hydro test or whatever. Do you have a inventory that you're able, you know, on each hose?
Yes, we keep inventory sheets.
For testing and stuff?
On each apparatus. And the hose testing is annual, um, completion. We, we complete every year, update our list. Um, but yes, we do have an inventory, um, sheet on each and every piece of hose that we have in service here on the apparatus.
Okay. Does it sound like you were surprised that some were?
I was surprised.
For the expense?
Yeah, I was surprised we had so much fail. Um, usually fire hose is, is good for, for ten years. Um, and I, I won't go into specific brand names, but we had a brand of hose, um, where the inner liner, um, separated on it and that hose is out of warranty. Um, so it's, it's just of no value to us and we just have to have it replaced.
Thank you, chief. I have no other questions?
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, any other comments, uh, from board members?
No, not tonight.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Works meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at six forty-three PM. We will meet again on Monday, November the eighteenth, in these chambers at six PM. The city council will convene at seven PM. Thank you. Tim?
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, November the fourth, two thousand and thirteen. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each, uh, council member to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Council on Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clark Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Ed Bell, District Two. And I believe, um, Mary will not be here tonight, but last I heard she, uh, has a major migraine. So excuse that for her.
And I'm Kathy Coates, Council on Large.
And I would like to also introduce, um, Cindy Kirkoffer. Cindy is our state rep for this area. Cindy, welcome tonight. Uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we have a special presentation, uh, from the Beautify Beach Grove concerning wreath donations.
Good evening, counsel and mayor Buckley. Um, on behalf of the Beautify Beach Grove, and we'd like everybody to stand, please, as a member of Beautify Beach Grove, Council Bell. Um, we would, uh, like to present, um, the Christmas wreaths to the city of Beach Grove. Um, the committee's worked very hard over the last year. We've had several fundraisers. Um, we've raised enough money to buy, um, wreaths for every bike pole and on Main Street. And Jim's going to, uh, and it will be at no tax dollars to the city because it's total donations. And Jim's going to tell a little bit more detail.
Um, we're donating, there's forty-one new light posts along the renovated Main Street. So we're going to donate enough for two wreaths or two swags for each light pole. So it'll be one on each side and then it'll be plugged in at the top and both of them are lighted. Um, the bows are, were sold to us at cost by our backyard florist on Fifth and Main. Um, he decided to donate those to our group. We just pay for the cost. Um, yeah, so we should have enough for every pole. Um, and they should be up and running here next couple weeks. Uh, I want to thank DPW. They're going to be the ones who, since we're donating to the city, they're going to be in charge of putting them up and maintaining and all that. So we appreciate that. So.
And you'll coordinate with our DPW director on?
We will absolutely. Yeah, yeah. We're supposed to get the shipments delivered here in the next couple of days. Once they come in, I will contact them and hopefully get them to where they need to storm and get them prepped and ready and get the bows attached and should be good to go. So things are going to look good.
All right.
And we would like to announce that we are working on our five K walk for next year. So we will be starting to work on that right away. The details will be coming about that.
Do you have any idea when you're going to do that? The big spring, summer?
Probably spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
Spring.
Not for sure, but.
Late spring. Yeah, we're still working.
Yeah, the sooner you let us know, the sooner we can talk about and get, let people know.
We're going to continue. This is our first main project. We have more projects that we got to figure out what we're going to do, but more, more steps to beautify the city and, you know, add to it. So.
Are you always recruiting new members also?
Absolutely.
And what's the name of the group?
Uh, Beautify Beach Grove.
And who would they contact?
Uh, contact either myself, Jim Coffin, Jackie, Julie, um, or any of the members standing up here, um, Ed Bell, any of us.
The camera's not facing that way. Can you give me a couple more last names?
Yes, Julie Lockwood, um, Ed Bell, myself, Kathy Hartwell, Marcia Cleary, Mary Carpenter.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, on behalf of the city, um, I want to thank you and I want to thank every organization who contributes to the city. Uh, tax dollars is, uh, just not enough anymore. So, uh, I'm sure on behalf of this council, we appreciate everything that every group does for the city of Beach Grove. And I thank you. Next special presentation is Counselor Davidson. Anthony?
Uh, I have a presentation tonight. Uh, just want to, uh, present it in front of the, uh, the council. Um, I want to ask Representative Kirk Crawford to come up here. Those are familiar with, uh, Scott Seach, Beach Grove Bowl. Um, he is not here yet. Of course, he's working hard. Uh, imagine that. Um, I have a, a word here for him, uh, from, uh, from Governor Pence. And Cindy, you want to read it?
Sure. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes to stand here tonight. I, um, know that Scott Seach has done great things for the community and, and Councilman Davidson and the council and the city would like to reckon, uh, recognize him for his efforts. So hopefully I can catch him as he comes in, but we'll read this into the record. So to all whom these presents may come greetings, whereas some individuals distinguish themselves through significant contributions to their communities, and whereas the qualities and characteristics of such individuals reflect the best of the great state of Indiana, and whereas the actions of these individuals endear them in the hearts and minds of all Hoosiers. And whereas Indiana treasures individuals who give their time and talents out of an abiding sense of responsibility, commitment, and concern for others. And whereas Scott Seach is such an individual who has earned the respect and admiration of Hoosiers and Grovers across the state and is worthy to join the ranks of these on the wreaths. I embellished on that part. Grovers isn't in here, but I know he thought about it. Now therefore, I, Michael R. Pence, Governor of the State of Indiana, do hereby declare and appoint Scott Seach as a distinguished Hoosier. Do you mind presenting it to him?
I will.
Great.
I will go there after, if any of the council members wants to join me, um, if he doesn't make it in, um, I will officially present it to him tonight. Go there and, uh, give it to him. Um, Scott, uh, I just want to say, uh, first, um, Scott is the reason why the, uh, Amtrak wall, uh, looks so nice. Uh, he organized that and, um, got a, a bunch of volunteers, including a lot of members of, of, uh, up here tonight. And, um, also the Special Rollers League, um, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. Um, it brings in people not only from the ci, you know, the city of Beach Grove, but all over Marion County, Johnson County. Um, the, you know, there's, there's, there's not another organization like it. And, uh, frankly, it's, it's, uh, makes Beach Grove just stand out, um, across the state of Indiana to me. Um, so, um, it's like you didn't make it in, but if you would, I'll just congratulate him, uh, if he seemed, uh, walking around the city or up at Beach Grove Bowl. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, we will, um, deviate from normal protocol and hear a petition zoning from St. Francis Franciscan Alliance. And at this time, I will turn the, uh, program over to our city attorney, Craig.
Thank you, mayor. This is a public hearing on a rezoning request being made by Franciscan Alliance on the property located at sixteen hundred Albany Street. President this evening is Ms. Linda Albrand from the City of Indianapolis's Metropolitan Development Commission. Is Mr. Graner here? Mr. Graner, uh, please step forward. Um, Mr. Graner's from the law firm of Bose McKinney and Evans. He's here on behalf of the Franciscan, Franciscan Alliance. Um, are there any remonstrators or those opposing the petition? Okay, I'll read, I'll read to you the rules of procedure. Um, petitioners have a maximum of, uh, of fifteen minutes for presentation of evidence, statements, and arguments in support of the petition. Remonstrators or those opposing the petition shall likewise have fifteen minutes for presentation of evidence, statements, and arguments, and oppositions to the petition. Thereafter, staff would, who is Ms. Albrand, shall make a recommendation and shall, shall also have opportunity to present. Um, the petitioner thereafter may have five minutes for rebuttal. Likewise, uh, any remonstrators can also have five minutes for a rebuttal. Thereafter, the council will be called upon to vote on the, on the petition. Um, petitioners must have complied with all notice requirements by posting a notice on the subject property at least twenty-three days prior to the hearing. Ms. Albrand, is it, you're understanding that the notice requirements have been met here?
I do have an affidavit in the file.
Okay, very well. Um, the council may have an opportunity to pose questions throughout the presentations. Um, the, the council may impose various conditions as amendments before, before reaching a, a decision on the, the petition before the council. After the council's recommendation of approval or denial, this petition would be placed on the November twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, no appeals docket of the Metropolitan Development Commission unless the petitioner, remonstrators, or staff appeal the petition by five PM on November eleventh, two thousand and thirteen. An appeal could be filed by submitting a written statement to the Division of Planning in room eighteen twenty-one of the city county building, which states that the appellant wishes to appeal the petition. If the, if the petition were not appealed, the Metropolitan Development Commission would vote on the city of, uh, the Beach Grove City Council's recommendation without holding a hearing on November twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. If the petition were appealed, the develop, the Metropolitan Development Commission would hold a public hearing on November twentieth, two thousand and thirteen and consider the testimony of the petitioners, remonstrators, and staff prior to vote, prior to voting to approve or deny the rezoning petition. If approved by the Metropolitan Development Commission, the rezoning would be certified to the city county council, uh, for final approval. If denied by the Metropolitan Development Commission, the rezoning would not proceed any further. Any questions before we proceed here tonight? Okay, Mr. Graner, since you represent the hospital, you may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Steve Graner. I'm a consult, zoning consultant with Bose McKinney and Evans with offices at one eleven Monument Circle Suite twenty-seven hundred. I'm here this evening on behalf of Franciscan Alliance, who's the owner of the property involved. With me this evening is Roger Barksdale. If you'll raise your hand, Roger. Roger's the vice president for ancillary services for Franciscan Alliance. And I can answer the zoning stuff. If you've got any questions about what's going on with Franciscan Alliance or St. Francis, uh, I'll pull Roger up probably to answer those questions. Our request is to rezone a portion of, of the old hospital site to the C. Watten zoning district, which is an office buffer district. Uh, the site is six point one three acres, uh, contained on the former hospital site, the Beach Grove campus, former Beach Grove campus of St. Francis Hospital. And on the site, uh, there's a two-story, a little over thirty-five thousand square foot office building there at the southeast corner, uh, along with accessory parking. The main portion of the subject site is zoned HD one, which was what. The main portion of the subject site is zoned HD1, which was what the whole campus used to be zoned, which is a hospital district, the primary hospital district zoning. The northeast portion, north of the building, is zone D5, its parking area, and it's there by a 1989 variance that was approved by the Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals. And the balance of the site to the west and the northwest corner is zone CS, which is a commercial special district. That's, as it says, special, it's a special commercial district, and you only get those uses that you request in that particular zoning district. Now, that was a 2008 rezoning, and if you were on the council back then, that actually was a petition that was initiated by the city of Beach Grove to rezone a major portion of the hospital campus, because I think at the time, they had a potential buyer and developer that wanted to use that site, and they needed to rezone it out of the hospital classification to permit those uses. That never, the zoning went through, but the deal never materialized, and so the portion of this six-acre site is zoned for that CS use. So we've got three zonings on this tract. Neither of the three, at this point in time, permit the use that's there. So we're requesting to rezone the site C1, which will allow bring the current use into conformity. It's currently, I think technically, legally established non-conforming use, because without the hospital there, it can't be a legal use under the existing zoning. So Franciscan Alliance has determined that they want to retain ownership of these 6.13 acres, and it's their intent to continue to use this office building as the IT center for their entire Franciscan Alliance hospital system. This requested rezoning is the proper zoning for this use and will allow for any future building additions that they, or other site improvements that they may desire to do in the future. Short and sweet, there's not much more to it than that. And with that, we would request your favorable recommendation, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. And like I said, I can answer the zoning stuff. I'll pull Roger up here if you've got more hospital-related questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Graner? John?
Just to make it even simpler for everybody else out there, the zoning right now is incorrect.
Correct.
We are trying to make it C1, which is commercial one.
Correct.
To make it in compliance with all zoning issues.
Correct.
That's as simple as it gets.
That's as simple as it gets.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I don't know. The change in zoning, because it was a hospital, is there any rehab that needs to be done to that property anywhere because of, what's it called? Environmental protection people?
You talking about the hospital site or our site, where the office building is that they're going to continue to use?
Either one. Are you just changing the zoning on yours?
Just on the six acres where the existing office building is.
Okay, well then.
Nothing to do with where the hospital buildings are.
Okay. Well, then in that case, probably you don't have any.
In fact, their plan is, I think, and I drove by it on the way here, I should have looked harder, I think they made improvements to the entrances, both at the south entrance and the north entrance.
Yeah.
And initially, and I think they're going to make some interior improvements and put a landscape strip, which will separate this site from the hospital site, where currently it's all paving and is connected. There'll be a landscape strip dividing it.
So you won't have any issues with that? A type?
Not on this site.
On your site.
Right.
That's, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Did I state that correctly, Roger?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, with this change, it will go actually on the tax roll now.
Right. Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
With this change, will this go now on tax roll? You know, be paying taxes on that property?
I don't know if I can answer that question or not. I don't know.
I don't know whether they are on that building now or not. If they're not, if they're not now, if they're not now, then the zoning wouldn't change that.
Since it's not a hospital, I didn't know.
They are, the ownership hasn't changed.
Well, it is. I don't know that the zoning would change the tax status, but I am not a tax expert. I can't answer that.
Right.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Graner? Thank you, Mr. Graner.
Thank you.
Are there any, is there anybody in the audience that is a remonstrator that would like to speak in opposition to the current petition? Okay. Ms. Albrand, will you please give the staff's recommendation or view of this petition?
Thank you, Mr. Wiley, council members, mayor. My name is Linda Albrand, and I represent the Department of Metropolitan Development for the City of Indianapolis. We review all rezoning petitions within the city of Beach Grove, whether it be rezonings or variances, and present a staff report to you. Our staff is recommending approval of this petition. The petitioner's representative stated correctly that this isn't basically an obsolete zoning because the hospital's now gone. The HD1 is for hospital uses or hospital-related uses, and since the hospital's no longer there, the zoning wouldn't apply. But it's been an office building, it's going to continue to be an office building. The C1 district is for office uses only, nothing above that, no retail, you know, higher intense commercial things. It does act as a buffer between the hospital site itself and the adjacent residential, and we are recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Ms. Albrand?
I've got one. Can you explain to us why it's coming before the city council instead of the Beach Grove zoning board?
Because it's a rezone of the property. The Board of Zoning Appeals only hears variances, whether it be a development standard variance or use variance, and that's just changing one aspect of the current zoning code. This is actually getting rid of a zone and bringing in a new zone, and that's a legislative decision. That's why your council's here, seeing it, and ultimately, the City-County Council will see it.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Albrand? Okay, is there a motion? Any discussion needs to be held before we do a motion?
If there's, don't, Kathy?
Well, I guess I'm, isn't Marion County going to be the ultimate decision-maker? We're just hearing for our benefit, so what do we need to move on? I guess that's my question.
Marion County is a countywide zoning code, and when Unigov was established, the excluded cities are allowed to preliminarily hear rezoning cases within their jurisdictions, and then that recommendation's passed on. It's essentially rubber stamped on the next two stages if there's no appeal of your decision. But it is a three-step hearing process ultimately through the City-County Council, because it's countywide zoning. You're welcome.
Do we need to hear from him again?
Yeah. Mr. Graner or Mr. Barksdale, do you have any rebuttal?
No, I don't think there's anything to rebut.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, I have a question. How should our motion read for the record?
What we would normally do is just come to a vote, and a yes or a no vote is yes to approve, no to deny, but there's no, in our hearings, no actual motion made. They just come to an immediate vote.
So I should ask the council for a vote to approve?
I would think somebody should make a motion to approve or deny, and that should be a second.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger, it's good to see you.
Thank you for coming.
Before I call the folks from Christopher Burke up, Scott Seach has arrived, so Councilor Davidson, do you want to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Scott, could you come forward, please?
Can I embarrass you a little bit, Scott? Okay, come on over here.
I'm involved.
There's no blood involved, I promise. This is from the state of Indiana, Governor Pence, and he would like to recognize you as a distinguished Hoosier on behalf of the state of Indiana.
Oh, thank you very much.
So for all your hard work and for everything you do, not only for the city, but for Marion County and the state of Indiana, we would just like to say thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do you have anything, want to say anything? I had no idea what it was all about, so I really don't have a whole lot to say. I didn't prepare anything, but just thanks. I mean, it wasn't just me with this project, it was everybody in the city. I mean, it just took a suggestion, and you guys all jumped in and helped out, so really, this is kind of for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask Heather Buck with Christopher Burke Engineering to approach the council, please. Heather is here along with folks from Department of Homeland Security to present the overview of the hazard mitigation plan for Marion County, which includes the city of Beach Grove. Heather, welcome to our fair city.
Thank you for taking some time. These pages that I'm handing out are just an executive summary, if you will, of the 200 pages that we've written, put together. So a little bit about, I hope everybody can hear me, I'm picking up, I tend to bellow, but a little bit about the multi-hazard mitigation plan. Is this a plan that is required to be developed and updated every five years? It's required by FEMA.
So in order to get any sort of funding following a hazard event, you need to have this plan in place, and the Marion County, City of Indianapolis, and all of the communities within had their plan approved in 2006. If you add that together, we're a little behind the ball, but we are proud to announce that FEMA has conditionally approved the plan as it stands right now. The only thing that is keeping it from final approval through FEMA's eyes are the local communities and the City-County Council approval. That's why we're making these presentations to the individual communities. And on the two-page or three-page summary, it does go into a little bit about the process that we used. So there's a risk assessment, we looked at the hazards that affect the county and the communities, we looked at how badly or how severe they may affect those communities, some things that have been done in the past to prevent or to mitigate hazards, and propose some measures that can be taken in the future. So there are whole sections on goals and practices that can be completed. The plan maintenance, like I said earlier, this is an every-five-year update, also an annual review. And then they also suggest, following a major hazard, that the folks get together and kind of evaluate the process, the resources that were used, some lessons learned, and then reevaluate and revise the plan if necessary. If you turn to the third page, and I can certainly share this with anyone that's interested in the audience tonight, but if you look at the third page, it shows how those hazards sort of flushed out as far as the magnitude, and these are based on the size of the population for the communities, as well as the entire county as one piece. So just looking at this and based on some of the responders and planners that were involved, you can see that dam and levee failure, tornadoes, and flooding generally have risen to the top as the most risk. They could cause the most damage, they are the most likely to occur, the most likely to affect the major areas of the entire county, and really potentially cause the most destruction I have a copy of the plan. Like I said, it's quite thick and cumbersome. If you haven't had a chance to look through it, we can definitely provide that electronically. I have some of the maps as well, but if you have any questions, I can answer more specific questions.
My question was about the scoring on the severity, because dam and levee failure was rather high, but that's overall not, that doesn't mean here in Beach Grove.
Right, that's the entire, within each of the hazards, so within flooding, tornado, hail, and definitely within dam, we look at how would a dam failure, say Eagle Creek, how would that, a failure of Eagle Creek dam? How would it affect Speedway? How would it affect Southport? How would it affect the rest of the county or the city of Indianapolis? So we add those all together to come up with that slider that you're seeing.
That makes sense to me then.
Okay.
Thank you.
What happens if we don't do this?
FEMA doesn't like it. I know that's kind of a cop-out answer, but what happens then is, you know, God forbid, a massive flood, a massive tornado comes through. If it's not locally adopted, you're not eligible for federal assistance through FEMA or through.
Would it be the city or the people who live here?
The people who live here, definitely. Also, as a part of this, and one of our major pushes to get this done, normally this takes us about 18 months, and we push through in about, I think it was less than six, less than six months. So take Indianapolis, and that's a pretty big bear to wrestle, but through FEMA, there's the National Flood Insurance Program. As a part of that, there's the community rating system. So as communities do more and more education, more and more preventative, and more and more mitigation, they get a higher number of points. The higher in points you go, the greater reduction in individual flood insurance premiums. So say, for example, you carry flood insurance, because the City of Indianapolis and the communities within participate in the community rating system, and because of the activities that go on, each individual homeowner that carries flood insurance voluntarily or mandatorily, they get 10% reductions. So if this is not adopted by November 29, that goes away. So that's millions of dollars, not just for Indianapolis, but for the entire county, and so definitely that can affect the residents as well.
We have a, one of our chiefs sat on this board. I don't know if Chief Cheshire, you wanted to comment, or just, we talked about it this afternoon.
I think it was explained very well to the council. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer this for you.
Being that Jones Chemical and the fertilizer plants and their vicinity to Beach Grove, are we at?
I'll mic up first so I can hear you.
Asking about Jones Chemical and the fertilizer plants and their proximity to Beach Grove, are we at any higher risk?
All of our target hazards for Beach Grove, we're taking into consideration for the plan, and it's all laid out pretty well. It doesn't, we still have our own community hazard response plans for all those facilities. This encompasses entire Marion County.
The entire, okay. So, but it's weighted in here?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and this doesn't replace any individual community's current plans or their response procedures by fire departments, police departments. It sort of aggregates that into one plan, but then meets several other checkboxes.
Any other questions for the, for Ms. Burke? If not, what we'll do is, under New Business, Resolution 13 addresses this matter, and we'll take that up when we get under New Business. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, we'll go back to the meeting, or the minutes of the previous meeting, October the 7th, 2013, have been included in your packet, and the floor is open for comments, questions, or corrections.
Well, I'll have a comment. It took me forever to read through this, 11 pages, but Dan, you did a fantastic job. It was a long meeting, and it's put in pretty good detail here. So good job. Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I motion that we accept Beach Grove City Council meeting minutes Monday, October 7th, as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Petitions or comments by citizens? Has anyone signed up to speak tonight? Anthony Kendall, Anthony?
Mr. Kendall, we please state your address.
61 North 8th Avenue.
Thank you. You have three minutes, sir.
Three minutes? That's it? Oh, wow. The reason I'm here this evening, since it's been a while, since you've seen my face, I'm trying to advocate for part of the St. Francis property to be reserved in some manner for a park, like a memorial park. To make this happen, it's going to take the involvement of the different groups from within the community. Now, I'm not exactly sure if the land that has the parking lot that's adjacent to the fire station is St. Francis property, but that's, if that is St. Francis property, that's the section that I was looking to do something like this. Regardless of what happens with the property, there's many people that have a lot of memories of St. Francis, regardless if they live in Beech Grove or not. And I just think it would be a nice thing to have in the community, as green space is at a premium, to have a small, dedicated space to help remember the hospital, and that it really was one of the key factors that helped Beech Grove become what it has, much like that of Amtrak. If Amtrak was in the same scenario, I would be advocating for the same thing. So, what I'm looking for from you as counselors and government officials is support on this, and to help work with me, with constituents in your district and other people who may share the same idea. And obviously, we would have to work with the owners of the properties and present it in a valuable way. Now, I have family who work at the Archdiocese, and one of my ventures that I'm going to take on is to pursue the Archdiocese, to also sponsor this project, and to try to possibly provide some of the funds, as well as, you know, work with any other group that's in the community to make this a park for the community. Even though that it's, you know, St. Francis is a part of the, was a part of the Catholic community, I don't necessarily believe that the park should be just dedicated in the manner of a religion, but in the manner of that it's a community park that's remembering something that was of the city. And being that the Catholic community is a part of that, I would hope that they would be interested in the same thing. Do you happen to have any thoughts on this?
Which property are you talking about?
Well, the one that comes to...
Is it currently being used as a parking lot for the building they were just talking about?
Yes, I believe it is. I believe it's the one that's actually across the street. So, it's close to the fire department, and they're tight on space, too, so if we could come up with something that all parties could come to a consensus on, as far as what is acceptable, I mean, it's close to the middle school, it's right there, close to the fire station, but something that's almost like a memorial-type park. I don't have anything specific in mind, but just a green space, you know, to, to help remember the St. Francis. There's all kinds of other things, plants, and could work with beautify Beech Grove. There's many different things we could do. This is just the very beginning of saying, here's an idea, what do we as a community think about it, and reserving this space for the future? And, you know, it's not a big space, and hopefully, being close to the fire department, that they might be able to enjoy it as well, some enjoyment out of it.
Any questions for Mr. Kendall?
Obviously, always. Are you talking about a large park, or are you talking about a small memorial?
Well, typically, I could give you a great example, but I don't know if you've ever seen it. In Plainfield and Avon meet, there's a roundabout, and there's a small, a small green space. While it's classified as a park, it's more of a war-type memorial, where they have the different flags for the different services men. Yeah, not, not a park as in a traditional park.
I understand.
It's more of a green space. Some could say it's a space of reflection, you just go and relax, so...
That clarifies it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
That concludes petitions or comments. We'll move to reports from committees, boards, and commissions. The Greenscape Committee filed a report with the Clerk Treasurer. Dan, would you like to read that, please?
Certainly. This from Tim Latimer. I will not be presenting a report this evening. The Greenscape Commission did meet on October 21st. All we have to report is that we worked on updating our Tree City Recertification Application that's due by December 31st. Beth submitted our minutes, and that's all we had. Thank you, Tim Latimer.
RDC?
How you doing? Joe Griffin, currently the president of the RDC. First off, I need to thank all those that took time out from their busy schedule to call, email, and stand at this podium to support me in cause of Resolution 12. I also need to thank council members for their support also in recognizing my knowledge and understanding of RDC materials and other materials also, before I open my mouth, that I do do my research. Even though you guys might not like my input, at least I am knowledgeable in everything else, as compared to whoever wrote this resolution, whichever anonymous councilman or whatever else. So, I hopefully am following up to my oath, which is, I will faithfully and impartially and diligently discharge of my services and duties according to laws and do the best of my ability. So, hopefully, I'm doing that. So, we'll head on from there. The NRP group has gone in front of the IHCD-A also. Anyone that wants to have any sort of input into that, they can go ahead and send it to Alan Rakowsky. I'll spell out his email for you. The email would be A.R.A.K.O.W.S.K.I@IHCD-A.in.gov. Or if you want to do it the old-fashioned way, you can mail it to 30 South Meridian Street, Suite 1000, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46204. Anything that you want to have on the NRP group, basically the rock pile, input one direction or the other, Republic's open to it, they have some of their stuff up there right now. Update on that, at our last meeting, the second appraisal was slammed down in front of me at that time, and the person that slammed it said it only took them 45 minutes, but after further questioning, come to find out, this person only found out a few days in advance from an unnamed individual, in which they did not want to name. When you go back and check the minutes and everything else, they said they had to have you's current information. This one is addressed to a redevelopment commissioner, and it's never been on redevelopment commission under the Buckley administration, and it is dated October 23rd, 2012, 2011. So, you know, when Dan and myself requested input from all the previous commissioners, our, our feedback was silence, definitely silence. And one of these individuals is even the president of a group here that's supposed to promote Beech Grove. It was definitely silence. We've had one commissioner talk, but it's been kind of mixed information on what we've had there. We were trying to get all that we could in order to, to get some stuff going. Update on the NPR group, NRP group, they started off with the original thing, is 78 housing additions, then it was 72. Now, looking on the site, they're down to 60 that they're turning in for a part of their $11 million as part of the low-cost housing for seniors, is the way that one's setting up to. Also, at the meeting, it was also brought up that commissioners don't understand what their job is and what they're, what they're supposed to, not supposed to. And as Mr. Wiley said, RDC is quite complex. However, I find it a little perplexing, because you can go out on the website, check our website, and many of you were there at the April meeting when Ice Miller gave their presentation, and also has a PowerPoint. I also put on there a comprehensive plan from the IHCD-A explaining what they were looking for, and what a complete comprehensive plan consists of, especially as far as they're concerned. The basics were on there, I thought they had a good one put on there, in order to show exactly what the IHCD-A was looking for. Each group looks for something a little different, but most of the basics are still the same. Also on there, people are under the false impression that RDC is going to save your town. I have presentations on there that state that if you're just relying on TIF, you're in trouble. It won't go. You're going to have to have TIF plus the other inputs to go ahead and have successful economic redevelopment. And that's why we've been asking for the partnerships and everything else to get going. You're going to need all that put together in order to get a successful redevelopment plan going. And then, it ticks people off, because I stay to the point, and sometimes you just can't vary from points. There are certain things that you just can't move from, and then when you try to explain, it doesn't go through very well. So, I ask everybody to please go to the website and look, because it's been on there since spring. The audio's on there with PowerPoint from Ice Miller, very good, very good basics and everything else. The presentation that I got when I attended the Marion County TIF work study that they had for the summer research, I put one of their presentations on there for the funding, and how TIF is going to have to work in conjunction with other things, and how TIF by itself does not work, otherwise you're going to be in trouble. You're, it's guaranteed almost failure, if you're just relying on TIF. And I think one of the things people don't realize is, is once they get on the RDC, they don't understand how much work that's actually involved in this, and how complicated it can actually really be. It's a time-consuming effort, and it's tough to do. You have to put in time, you have to put in effort, and, you know, it, I don't know, I'm not saying that you don't have to on the other ones, but you definitely have to on the RDC, especially in some of the shapes that we're in, and some of the places that we got to go. It's, it's a very complicated and tough way to approach. So, you know, if we could have got some input and everything else, that would definitely help us out in our situations as we were going down through here, trying to get some of this stuff, and try to fully understand what has gone on in the past and what has become part of, I guess you can say. I won't go any farther than that. You guys have seen all the emails and all that other stuff there. So, I appreciate everything. Questions?
Next meeting.
Third Thursday of the month, third Thursday of the month, up here, please show up. We need all people input, because the biggest part of successful RDC, any part of economic redevelopment, is community input. So, please show up. Everybody come, we need you there. Show, and greatly appreciate it. Anything else?
Thank you, Joe.
Public Safety Report.
Mayor and Council, Public Safety Committee met, and our discussions, new business, was a postponement of Halloween trick-or-treat, and that was a very excellent move for public safety with the storms that did come in Halloween evening. I'm very grateful that we didn't have children out on the streets, and the weather that we did receive. It went over with a success, didn't have any reports of any injuries on the streets at night, which is excellent. We did discuss the stop sign, the additional flags that was placed in for safety at Fifth and Albany. There's no other complaints from those residents that I had. The police department did discuss several violent runs here in the city. Our next meeting is November 27th, 9 o'clock here in the chambers, and everyone is welcome to attend. Is there any questions?
I wanted to ask if the flags have made a difference. I noticed them, and has there been any feedback from...
I would have to defer to the Deputy Chief, Michael Maurice. He's been working on that issue pretty diligently. Mike?
To be honest, Kathy, we haven't received any more complaints, other than the flags are ugly, so, pretty much whatever we do gets a complaint, so, but we haven't had any more issues.
So, attention asked for, we address the problem, so I think we're...
Been being addressed for the past seven weeks, so...
I'm aware, but...
You did one more step.
The flags are beautiful.
They are there.
Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Jim Brooks, I spoke with Jim Brooks today with the ABC, there's no activity going on to report. The last committee report is financial, I'll defer to the clerk.
Counselors, the audit is complete. We saw improvements, and I believe we are moving in the right direction. The audit is 31 pages, including all the customary paperwork that the State Board of Accounts includes with the audit. The examination results and comments that the State Board of Accounts noted were two pages, so I have included those in my response with my financial report to the council this evening. The audit can be reviewed in its entirety on the website at www.beechgrove.com. And many of the errors noted were from the annual report. We will be working to correct those this year. We are beginning preparation for the year-end, and began loading the budget into Keystone. We are hoping for a smooth transition into 2014. Jeff Peters and the clerk's office have been working on restructuring the worksheets for the Main Street Loans Program to bring them into compliance with the State Board of Accounts. My office also found that in 2004, the city purchased an inventory program from Keystone, named Key Assets. It has not been used in a number of years, yet the city has continually paid $1,100 per year for the program. Debbie has been working on correcting the capital assets inventory sheets for the city, so she will be updating the program with our current assets. When I came into office, I found that the Beech Grove Post Office was holding $1,239.03 for a postal permit that had been purchased years ago when the city ran the Beech Grove Times newsletter. I have been working for over a year to get that money returned to the city, and I am happy, I am happy to report that just last week, the city received a check for the full amount. Tonight begins the process of approving the ordinance for the tax anticipation warrant. Again, this year, I have been working with Ron Magnus, Deputy Director of the Indiana Bond Bank, and I have received our closing packet with the ordinance, which was prepared by Brendan DeVries, Associate with Brigham, Greenbaum, and Dahl. This is the same firm that prepared the document last year. Again, this year, we will not know the dollar amount of the warrant until after the ordinance is approved, nor the interest rate. The Indiana Bond Bank determines the amount the city is eligible to borrow, and they always have the lowest interest rate. The city website continues to be successful, and is provided at no charge to the taxpayers. The $75 bi-yearly fee would have been due again in December, and has already been paid for by a local business owner. I thank them for their donation. We continue to have wonderful volunteers that assist us with updating and posting. Please, if you have any community events that you would like posted, email those to me at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. We try to get those posted the same day. Financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, and more are available online at www.beechgrove.com. Also, I have transfer requests tonight. There are requests to transfer money from the Sewage Fund to the Main Street Project Fund. After meeting with Trent Newport of Crossroads Engineers, he provided me with an estimate as to what the charges to the Sewage Fund should be... as to what the charges to the Sewage Fund should be for the sewer work completed on the Main Street project. To date, all invoices received have been paid from the City of Beach Grove Corporation account. The Beach Grove Sewage must reimburse the city for the expenses incurred from the sewage completed. Also included in tonight's transfer request are shortfalls and overtime for the fire and police departments, as well as fuel for the police department. As you may recall, in the 2014 budget, council has approved a hundred thousand dollars each for both fire and police departments. We had approximately seventy-five thousand per department this year, and we have fallen short. The bank account balances are all online and listed here on my report to the council members. So anybody that wants to go to the city website, all this information is on there. That's all I've got.
Questions for the clerk?
Nice work, Dan.
Thank you.
Move on to, by any chance, is the mayor's, ballot's liaison...
Sure, Ms. Gary.
Yeah. Unfinished business carried over from previous meeting. In October, with council, you approved General Ordinance Number Twenty, Two Thousand Thirteen concerning salaries for fiscal year 2014. Upon reviewing that, I petitioned council to advise my rights pursuant to veto legislation, and I sent you a correspondence on October the ninth, two thousand and thirteen, that it was my intent to veto the court clerk's salary of one thousand six hundred... One thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-five, and take it back to the original salary of one thousand six oh five fifteen. That's what she's being paid this year. Also, I... My reason for that is I have no objection to the argument that more responsibility has been taken on with the addition of Southport, Lawrence, and Speedway, and an increase in pay is well-deserved for the court clerk. My objection comes from the realization that our police department, fire department, are making more runs than ever and have not realized an increase in over four years. Workers in the Department of Public Works are picking up more trash than ever before. Employees at the Senior Citizen Center are picking up and delivering seniors to doctor's appointments in record numbers. And last year, the employees in the clerk's office issued a record number of permits, dealt with an increase in sewer rates this year, and may be subject to stormwater fee adjustments beginning in 2014 without an increase as well. My second veto was on Page Four, Section Two, Educational Incentive Benefit. Reason for the veto, on December the seventh, nineteen ninety-seven, the city council passed General Ordinance Number Five, nineteen ninety-seven, Educational Incentive Pay, and the city council amended the ordinance on January the third, two thousand and five. Included with this notification is a copy of the ordinance, which is listed in the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove under Section Thirty-seven Point One-One, Educational Incentive Pay. This was approved and is on the books, and unless the city council desires to amend such ordinance, the ordinance stands and is subject to enforcement. So we have an ordinance on the books pursuant to educational paying, besides the educational or besides the salary ordinance. And I will veto that to enforce the salary thirty-seven, our ordinance Thirty-seven Point One-One that is already on the books. So with that, I defer back to the city attorney because I received notification that there's a thought that I might not have the authority to invoke vetoes or line item vetoes, and I want to set the record straight because it is my intent to bring it to a vote for you this evening. And I'll defer to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Judge Wells here this evening? Okay. Okay. Judge, we... It's my understanding that a letter went around to the counselors. I have not seen that letter. One of the counselors did contact me over the weekend and read it to me, so I'm vaguely familiar with what it says, but I'd like for you to present your case, and then I'll tell you, I'll tell the council what my perspective is.
Okay, well, I'm on, this must have been a week or so ago, I received notification from a member of the council that the mayor had issued a, I guess what I'll call line item veto, in a cited case, or excuse me, state code as rationale for that regarding the court clerk's salary that was unanimously passed by this council on numerous readings. I also saw a memo that was produced by the city attorney presenting the rationale for the authority of the line item veto. I did some legal research of my own and came to a slightly different conclusion. I don't refute the notion that the mayor of a city or the city executive has the authority to issue a veto, but they're only allowed to do a line item veto under an appropriation or a tax levy situation. I did some more research as to what was allowed to be vetoed in the, I guess, let me back up. As you've seen my letter, I contend the salary ordinance doesn't fall into that category. Case law doesn't speak directly to a salary ordinance, however, there's numerous cases outlining that ordinances are ordinances unless they fall into other categories or are specifically outlined by the legislature, which this is not. Secondly, if you were to determine that it was an appropriate line item situation, the courts have determined that it's only appropriate in certain instances, and some of those are listed out and barred, that they are not proper. If you've seen my letter, one of them is specifically, city executives can't line item veto anything that has to do with judicial offices, which the City Court of Beach Grove is a judicial office. So this court clerk's salary is part of that judicial office. Basically, what it comes down to is, my concern is that the salary ordinance in and of itself replaces the old salary ordinance. A repeal, or excuse me, a veto, line item veto of an ordinance that is currently being passed, does not revert back to the old ordinance. You can't write in something new into an ordinance that was just passed. I've not been able to find case law on that. If there is some, I'd like to see it. There's nothing in statute that I found that allows you to, when you're repealing an entire ordinance, you leave in something if it's not in the new ordinance. So my concern is that we're going to have a hard-working city employee who has been stripped of her pay completely and won't receive any compensation come January first because of a line item veto that removes her pay. I mean, the mayor is the city executive, however, he's not the legislative body, so he can't write the ordinance by vetoing it. That's my concern. Lastly, my concern, as you saw in the letter, was just a lack of communication. I had, no one talked to me about this. I had to find out from a council member who was kind enough to loop me in on what was going on. So, I mean, that's just frustrating, but so it goes with this administration sometimes. So that's why, if you have any questions for me, I've laid it all out there pretty clearly. I've researched it, took me quite a few hours to get through everything, so I'm certain that the city attorney probably has some other thoughts. I mean, lawyers do disagree sometimes and from respectful positions, but that's what I found, that's what I believe, and I think to be on the safe side of everything, to make sure everything's covered, you should vote in favor to support what you guys passed in the first place. And then next year, if we want to sit down and address and have a constructive conversation on the way this should work, then let's do it there and not try to fight this with vetoes and things like that.
What would have happened if the council voted no to the salary ordinance?
To the salary ordinance entirely, I don't dispute the fact that you could have vetoed the entire salary ordinance. You could have done that, but you didn't. You did a line item, and I don't see the authority for that on this ordinance. I'm not going to dispute the fact that you have the ability to use line items in appropriate situations. I just don't think this was one of them.
Is the salary ordinance an appropriation?
I don't think so. I think the budget is an appropriation. I think this is an instrument that is telling the clerk's office and the city in general how to just, how to issue paychecks. I don't think it's necessarily an appropriation. And I looked and researched, and I didn't see anything that spelled that out.
Is the budget an appropriation?
Yeah, but it's a different ordinance. You could have vetoed that or line item vetoed that, and you didn't.
But the appropriation from salary ordinance is in the budget, category one.
I disagree.
Also, is the clerk a city employee?
Yeah, she's an employee of the, employee of the City Court of Beach Grove.
And let me re...
And that's another thing. Thank you for bringing that up, Mayor. I forgot to mention, by state code, I'm allowed, the authority of the city judge is to appoint a city clerk, and otherwise, that duty falls to myself or Dan. And Dan and I, early on, had a discussion, let's make sure we have a professional in there that does it properly, and so that's how Cindy Johnson was appointed. So I exercised that duty under state code and appointed her. So tampering with that, I feel, is also borderlines on an in-run around that statute in some manner.
I got a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Judge?
Yes.
Like I said, I have not seen your letter. Somebody read it to me. Do you have it with you this evening?
I don't have a copy with me, but I'm sure the council members might have a copy.
Okay. I, I've submitted or passed around to the council members a memo I put together in response to an email I received on October sixteenth from Councilor Davidson, essentially setting forth the administration's position on the mayor's veto power. I think it's sound, and I stand by it. A couple of things. I don't dispute, by looking, again, by what the letter was paraphrased to me and what was read to me, that the city judge under thirty-three, thirty-five can appoint a clerk, no doubt about that, okay? However, you cite to Indiana Code Thirty-six Three, okay? Indiana Code Thirty-six Three is entitled Government of Indianapolis and Marion County Unigov.
Correct. And if you look at my letter, there's a case, and the citation escapes me, the name of the case. And what the Indiana Court of Appeals did was, some, I think the case took place in Union County, I could be mistaken, over in east-central Indiana, where they were trying to sort through what a city executive could veto or line item veto. And they determined, the Indiana Court of Appeals determined, that they must look to other statutes that address the issue in order to decipher that. So they said, they determined that that code, which is the Indianapolis Marion County Unigov line item veto, veto power restriction, for a summary, it lists a bunch of restrictions where you can't use veto power. It says that will speak in lieu of the legislature specifically adding something into this code. And you can look up that, the citation is there in the letter, it's got the case law, and that's not, that's been upheld, it's not been overturned, and the legislature still hasn't added in any additional lines in the, in the code that was cited by the mayor.
So you're relying on the Unigov statute?
I'm relying on the Indiana Court of Appeals opinion that states that that statute applies here. And anywhere, I mean, they use that, that Unigov statute for a county in east-central Indiana that had a similar issue.
You mentioned in the letter that, and I made, I made a record about, there was an effort or a movement to reduce the mayor's secretary's salary.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that you made a reference that by reducing the clerk's salary, that we're placing the city in legal jeopardy.
No, that, that's an incorrect summation. The, my, my position is that I'm afraid that if this line item veto is able to stand, what it's going to result in is that a complete or deletion of her compensation. If that were to occur, I don't see how you can sit up here as an administration and scream lawsuit when they're talking about the mayor's assistant's salary and not think that deleting her, the court clerk's salary would be a similar thing. I'm not saying that not affording her a slight increase in compensation would do that. Obviously, that's not lawsuit material, but if you're going to delete her pay completely and remove her compensation, then I don't see how that wouldn't be a much larger liability than just simply reducing someone's salary to what it was a couple of years ago.
Do you see the distinction between reducing somebody's salary and not giving somebody a raise?
That's, yes, but again, you don't, you didn't understand what I just said.
I understand.
Okay, well, I, I'm not arguing that not giving her a raise would be a liability. I don't think that's an issue for liability. What I'm afraid of is that the mayor's line item veto is deleting her pay. As I discussed earlier, that's, he, the mayor doesn't have the authority to write legislation. So if he vetoes something, he's removing it from the legislation. He's not, there's nothing that says it reverts back, it's just not in the new ordinance that sets forward the compensation. So if that goes through, her salary goes from whatever it is now to zero. So if you can't, you can't sit here, I mean, I, you can't tell me, Craig, that if we took someone's salary from whatever it is now to zero, that we haven't, we haven't set ourselves up as a city for some sort of liability there.
Well, I'm not sure what the liability would be, but let me, let's put that aside.
Well, okay, well, just bear with me for a second. So a few meetings ago, you sat up there, and when the, when the council was discussing reducing the mayor's assistant's salary by ten thousand dollars, or whatever that number was, back to what the previous administration paid that position, you sat there and you said, "Oh, we're going to open ourselves up for liability, and she's a female, and this and that," and you ran down the plaintiff's attorney's list of what people go to lawsuit over. You cannot tell me that a female sitting at the city court clerk that also happens to be a Republican and not a Democrat would not have the same ability to go to downtown Marion County City County Council Building and file the same lawsuit against this city.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know your clerk's political affiliation, I don't think it matters here.
I'm just saying, I don't see how you can dispute that those are not similar.
What I'm saying is, is that with one, they were reducing his salary, here, we're the council...
But here, what I'm saying is, this, this veto, this act, the mayor's office cannot, the mayor is not the legislative body, never has been and never will be. That's in states, that's in the Indiana Constitution. So by a veto, does not rewrite a code. So he can't veto a line item and then re-insert and say, "Well, I mean it to be two thousand twelve's," or "I mean it to be whatever." He can't do that.
And you acknowledge you found no case law supporting your position on that particular fact.
Exactly. So I would think, I would think then, okay, so tell me this. I did find case law, Craig, that says that if you pass an ordinance that repeals an old ordinance, the new ordinance stands. That's democracy one oh one.
If you're trying to make a record, I think you've done it. He said no to the raise, her salary reverts back to what it was.
How, it's not, the way he did it was a line item veto, it deletes the whole thing out. He can't, he can't rewrite and add in legislation that wasn't passed by the council.
It's budgeted. Andy, it's on page three, and it's budgeted.
It's budgeted in the budget ordinance. I mean, this is simple legislative stuff, guys. We're not, we're not reinventing the wheel. I mean, this is simple budgetary stuff. The budget is its own ordinance, the salary ordinance is another ordinance. That's why we take different votes on them. That's why we have different hearings on each one.
Council members, I stick behind what's in my memo. If you have anything else?
You got this information on October sixteenth, and you passed out your rebuttal ten minutes ago?
I sent it to Anthony, yes.
No, I think what he's talking about is the memo that I said that we saw a few weeks ago.
He just passed out, I just got. We got into this so quick, I've not had a chance to read what his rebuttal is or research any of it. If you had this information since October sixteenth, I think I deserved it before now, at least with the packet.
Well, there was an email addressed to me, I didn't know it was going, I thought, I thought the, which is a little bit disconcerting, so I thought we explained...
It's on the agenda, so you knew we were going to talk about it tonight.
Well, I thought the issue was resolved when I sent it to Anthony and the judge, and then I found over the weekend it hadn't been resolved. So I didn't think it was an issue, quite frankly. I'm not trying to exclude you, that's not it at all.
John, I know personally, I received a letter from the judge Friday.
That's when I got mine.
I got this... I got this 3 minutes ago.
Okay, too. But what he's saying is, this was addressed to Anthony back then, and he thought it was resolved then.
Anything else, Judge?
If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer questions. I know this can, this case law and Indiana Code and things like that can get confusing. I'm not here to confuse anybody, so.
I don't know if this is for you or for Craig. My question is, the intent of the veto, as I understood it, was not to eliminate the position, which is how I'm understanding you to take it. It was to revert her salary back to the budget amount that was, that, in the budget that we passed, which was different than the one you presented, granted, but it is the one that was passed and that's what her salary would keep. So, how, so, since we passed an ordinance and he's saying that he's vetoing it, do we, we amend it or we pass a, what do we do now?
Here's-
Go back the way it meant for it to be.
And I didn't say this earlier, and I think I said this in the, the letter, I, I'm not going to dispute that the mayor, what the mayor's intention is. I, I'm sure his intention is to roll it back to whatever it was. But what I'm saying is legally, that's not the effect. Indiana case law says, if you pass an ordinance that repeals an old ordinance, the new ordinance is the ordinance, right? The new ordinance is law, okay? So, you pass a new ordinance with salary ordinance, with the court clerk's salary outlined, all right? The mayor exercised a line item veto. Now, I dispute his authority to do that. Well, let's say for a second, he's allowed to do that. Indiana case law says that new salary ordinance is the ordinance. Well, if you take out that line item, you can't insert a new line item because he's not the legislative body. So, it's deleted out.
Right, but my, here, that my question is, did, how do we put it back?
You would need to overturn, oh, I, I think that, I, I argue with the fact that the veto is legitimate. However, that's going to, that's going to take, that's going to take a court case and months and money and, and a lawsuit to get it out. So, to ease that situation and to expedite the whole thing, all the council needs to do is just overturn the veto and then we're at, we're, we're set and we don't need to worry about it and no one needs to, to fight about it.
Okay, overturn the veto and then can we amend?
You can amend whatever you want if you pass a new ordinance, yeah, you're allowed to do that.
I don't think you can do that.
You can't do that.
Not on salary ordinance.
It's because of salary ordinance.
Oh, well, the salary ordinance might have a special situation.
Well, I, I just, you can't unwear the law, I guess.
I, I think where we part ways is, is I think the intent's important. And I think you're saying that-
I'm not, I'm not going to dispute what the mayor's intent was. What I'm saying, I'm disputing what the legality of his actual action is. And I think his actual action was carelessly disregarding the clerk's salary, which I'm not going to say his intent was, but that's, that's the, that's the effect. So, I mean, be that as it may, that's what it is at the end of the day.
Okay, question. Why can't they make a new ordinance then for the clerk's salary if they veto it?
The ordinance, the salary ordinance has to be done by, I think, the end of October?
November 1st, it was certified.
In pursuit of the statute, at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which was tonight, is when they took up any, any attempts to override the veto.
Correct.
So, folks, I, I stand by what's in the memo. I, I, I respect you, I know you, I hope you respect my position as well.
I do. I, I mean, I, I came to a different conclusion. I found case law that I think is, that I, I think one says that his authority to use that line item isn't appropriate in this situation. And I, and I'll leave it at this, I, I'm afraid that the effect of this is going to be, come January 1, the court clerk's not going to have a salary. And then, I don't know what we're going to do, but-
Is that possible, Dan?
To my knowledge, no, because it's in the budget. But I'm not an attorney, so I cannot state one way or the other, but as long as it's in the budget, I would say she's going to get a paycheck on January-
Would you refuse to pay her based on what happened tonight?
No, I would pay her with whatever the salary ordinance orders me to do.
And see, that's, and therein lies the issue. I'm afraid that now the salary ordinance is silent on that. And I'm not going to blame, I mean, I'd like him to keep paying her, but if he, if he's pushed to do what the law says and it's not in there, I can't force him to issue a paycheck. And then where are we?
I can just tell you, I will pay her on January 1 because it's in the budget.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's still budgeted and we've got, you know, we've got thousands of cases now and numerous clients using this court that we can't afford. Personally, I don't think we can afford to take this mistake. And if we need to redress it next year, I think we should. But I think the appropriate action for you to take tonight is to override the veto and ensure that we don't have any issues. Because by overriding the veto, you're going to avoid any kind of litigation that would need to happen, you're going to avoid any kind of lawsuit that could be filed. We don't need to get an Attorney General's opinion, we don't need to do anything like that. We can just move forward and address this again next year.
Based on the number of counselors that are present here this evening, there'd need, need to be four votes to override the mayor's veto. How you want to do this?
I think that would be our best step. Isn't that, isn't that where we need to go next? What direction would you like to go from here, Craig?
I think we, we, that's probably the way, we should go down the line and vote. There's got to be a motion.
I'll make said motion that we vote to see if we are overturning the mayor's veto from the last memo I received from him.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, if you want to override my veto, you vote yes. If you want to sustain the veto, you vote no, beginning on my right.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Well, yeah, all right, yeah, good point.
This is just on the court clerk.
Right, that's right, just, just the court clerk.
So, if we go back to it, she gets the raise, correct?
If, if the mayor's veto is overridden, she gets the raise.
Counselor Bell, I think the most important thing is here is that she gets paid. That's what's the concerning part.
That is right, that, and I made the comment the night we voted on it, because I said that she took a job as the clerk of the city of Beach Grove. She is currently serving as a clerk of many cities, doing much more, much more responsibility. I made that very clear.
Aren't we in the middle of a vote right now?
Okay.
Yes to override veto, no to sustain.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
You have to say yes, because then we go back.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Four votes, okay, the veto is overridden. Move on to-
Thank you, counsel.
Move on to the second veto, the educational pay, that is already in the ordinance. Motion to over, motion to, what do you want to say?
Is there, is there a motion to override-
Override the mayor's veto.
-the veto on the educational incentive pay?
No.
No.
And the veto stands, and I will get with the clerk about the enforcement of the, of the current ordinance at the beginning of next year.
Okay, that was sectioned, correct?
That concludes old business, unfinished business under new business transfers within the clerk's office. And we'll begin with these transfers, non-sewage works.
Okay, counselors, you want these done one at a time?
No, we'll do them as a group.
Okay. Transfer 7,000 from sewage regular salaries to Main Street Redevelopment Project. Transfer 4,000 from sewage, BICA, to Main Street Redevelopment. Transfer $900 from sewage Medicare to Main Street Redevelopment. Transfer 21,000 from sewage unemployment to Main Street Redevelopment. Transfer $9,900 from sewage medical insurance to Main Street Redevelopment Project. Transfer 1,500 from sewage dental to Main Street Redevelopment. Transfer $3,100 from sewage health savings to Main Street Redevelopment. Transfer $1,800 from sewage retired health benefits to Main Street Redevelopment. Transfer $800 from sewage life insurance to Main Street Redevelopment Project. And this, let me make one other statement here. When the mayor and I met with Trent Newport, at that time, he thought that probably we would need about 70,000 from sewage to move over to the Main Street Project. After talking to him tonight, we're moving 50,000, but he don't think it'll be any worse, near the 70. And I didn't want to move it all at one time because, for one thing, I was having trouble finding 70,000 dollars. So, right at the moment, this 50,000, we'll get crossroads caught up and take care of any shortfalls we have.
Okay, before I ask for a vote, concern or question?
Yeah, I, I've raised the que, and can this be added to tonight, since I just, I just got it?
It's just a transfer of money. I mean, we can do them on one vote.
I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with voting on this as soon as I get it. I just got it at the beginning of this meeting.
Okay.
Craig, are there any legal issues with transfers?
I mean, it was, it was, it was in the posting of the meeting. I mean, I don't, quite frankly, don't see anything wrong with it. I mean, you can-
It is legal.
You can, yeah, you can table it, but it's legal.
Okay.
I would, one thought that I would have would be moving money from a municipally-owned private utility.
This is not like moving it from one budget category into another, which these other transfers actually are, and they were in your packet on Friday. This I've been working on, just to try to come up with enough money to even come close to the 70 that he originally had came up with.
Any other comments from council members? Should we proceed?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like I said, I mean, it was advertised, I, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, if, if they don't want to hear it, it's making a move to table it and then it has proper votes, they can hear it the next meeting.
Motion to approve the transfers listed by the clerk treasurer?
I'll second it.
I need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Next series of transfers dated November the 4th.
That wasn't a vote though, was it? That was just a vote to see if we were going to vote on it. Isn't that what just happened?
No, I think, I think we voted to approve it.
Okay.
My bad.
You all right with that vote?
I'm okay with the vote.
Oh, okay.
Of what that was?
Yeah.
We can go through it once more if you like. I thought we did.
These next transfers are dated November the 4th, and I'll defer to the clerk to read those for the record.
Okay, these transfers, 12,000 from Board of Works, Workman's Comp, to Police Fuel. Transfer 10,000 from Board of Works Crossing Guards to Police Overtime. Transfer 7,000 from Board of Works Building Commissioner to Fire Overtime. Transfer 5,000 from City Hall Repairs and Maintenance to Police Electric. Transfer $1,672.40 from Community Center Sick Day Buyback to Parks Temporary Salaries. Transfer $1,000 from Parks Building Materials to Parks Temporary Salaries. And what's actually happened here is, right now, the police and fire overtime were in the negative. Parks Temporary Salary, before we paid them last Friday, had $40 in their budget. So, alls I'm trying to do is shore them up for the remainder of the year.
Dan, has this, has this been fixed for next year?
Well, we're trying to. I mean, your budget is a guesstimate. We never know, we don't know the cost of gasoline, you know? There's certain things that you just don't know, insurances, gasoline, overtime, like right now, Rob's got, what'd he say, three tonight, that's on light duty, and he had a fourth that's getting ready to go over. So, his retirement has been through the roof. You, you could never do that to fix it. Both departments will be getting 100,000 in overtime next year. They were at 75. So, yes, I'm trying to correct it, but probably we'll be doing the same thing next November.
Okay. We, we do this.
Every year.
This year. This I'm every year.
Motion to approve the transfers that stated by the clerk treasurer?
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Move on to resolution number 13, 2013, Marion County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. I'll defer to the clerk to read it into the ordinance or into the record.
Resolution number 13, 2013 is a resolution that adopts the Marion County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, whereas the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan has been prepared by Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for Marion County, the City of Beach Grove, the City of Lawrence, the City of Southport, and the Town of Speedway, Indiana, and whereas the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan recommends many activities which will protect the people and property of Marion County, the City of Beach Grove, the City of Lawrence, the City of Southport, and the Town of Speedway, Indiana, affected by natural hazards, and whereas the City of Beach Grove, per the 2007 CRS Coordinator's Manual Criteria, the governing body must adopt the MHMP by resolution in order to be eligible for FEMA funding and keep their CRS status. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beach Grove desires to be part of the Marion County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now therefore be it further ordained by the common council of the City of Beach Grove that the following occurs. The Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan from Marion County, Indiana, the City of Beach Grove, is adopted as the official plan of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, that this plan is adopted as the official plan of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. Now therefore be it further ordained by the common council of the City of Beach Grove, that this resolution only applies to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now therefore be it further ordained that this resolution shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Questions or comments? If not, ask for a motion to approve resolution number 13, 2013.
I'm motion, I, I make said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 22, 2013 is up for first reading only, and it's the Indiana Bond Bank's 2014 Advanced Funding Formula. I'll defer to the clerk for an explanation of the ordinance, please.
Ordinance Number 22, 2013, an ordinance authorizing the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund, the debt service fund, the police pension fund, and the fire pension fund of the issuer. In anticipation of and not in excess of current taxes levied in the year 2013 and collected in the year 2014, authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank, and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
If we could explain to the council, this is something that is done every year, if you could go into-
Okay. We started using the bond bank, I believe, last year. But anyway, what they do is, they tell us how much we can actually borrow as a municipality, and then we pay them back in June and then December. So, it's a, a six-month and 12-month loan is what it is. So it's a, a six-month and 12-month loan is what it is to save us on interest and so forth. But anyway, previously, they had used Regions Bank. We could go to Regions Bank and we could borrow three, four, five million dollars. Every year since we've been with the bond bank, our amount we borrow keeps getting lower and lower, which is our goal to do that eventually. Hopefully one day we won't have to do this. But this is actually, on January 2nd, they will give us enough for 30 days worth of money. And then, so we'll have a closing on the first 30 days and then the next closing will be for the remainder of the 11 months. And this is something we did last year. Like I say, they don't tell you what the interest rate is or what your borrowing amount is, but I can tell you they're very conservative on what they give you, so...
What did we borrow last year?
I want to say it was a little over $2 million.
Do we expect it to be?
Less.
By, say, 200,000?
Uh, I couldn't tell you, John.
If they offer 5 million, we're going to take what we need?
Right, we, they would never offer a salary.
We're going to take what they offer?
Right.
Or do we have a set amount that we're aiming for?
We don't have a set amount. We just go by their guidelines. And this is a government entity that actually owns the bond bank.
Is it still called a tax anticipation warrant?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Any other questions for the clerk? If not, due to, uh, uh, the amount of paperwork in this ordinance, I would ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only on first reading.
I'll make said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. And I'll defer to the clerk to read it by title only, please.
Okay. Indiana Bond Bank's 2014 Advanced Funding Program, ordinance number 22, 2013, an ordinance authorizing the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund, the debt service fund, the police pension fund, and the fire pension fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current taxes levied in the year 2013 and collectible in the year 2014, authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereof.
Questions or comments from council?
Can I make one other comment? Just to let you know, this amount would never be more than what we get in our tax proceeds. So, you know, I don't want to be real invasive, but they don't tell us. So it would never be more than that.
Then we can pay back.
Yes.
If there's no comments or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve general ordinance number 22, 2013 on first reading only. Motion and a second?
Kathy, you second?
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will hear, this passes on first reading. We will hear general ordinance number 22, 2013 on second and third reading at the next meeting, which is December the 2nd. I'll defer this time to the council president pursuant to the RDC.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll pardon make it short. As I mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, November to collect nominations for a position open on January 1 from the RDC. So, get nominations, please. You guys let each other know names so we can review. And then we will bring it up for a vote on December 2nd so we can have it approved.
How many positions are you trying to fill, Ed?
Uh, just one.
One position?
So do we have any tonight? Want to bring more? Yep, none? There, I'll turn the floor back to you.
Thank you. Council comments, beginning on my far right, Dave?
None. Thank you, thank you for showing up tonight.
Uh, Beautify Beach Grove is always looking for new members. Anybody that wants to join, there were several names and numbers of people you can contact. Sounds like a great group. And those people out there looking for other places to donate their time, so maybe that would be a good one. Um, as Ed just men, I'm sorry, Councilman Bell just mentioned, there is one RDC position available. Uh, if anybody knows of anybody or they themselves are interested, contact one of us sitting up here. And Beach Grove Girls Volleyball made it to the sectional finals and made it no further than that. It was a good year, it was fun to, it was a fun group of kids and basketball is right around the corner. And the band finished third in state, which is a fantastic accomplishment. It's almost a letdown for them when they don't do any better than that because they always do such a great job. But we'll take third in the state anytime.
Dave?
Just like I said, it was an interesting meeting. And, um, I would like to make a suggestion next year, next year's budget, that maybe prior to presenting the budget, maybe we get a Democrat and a Republican council member. I know Dan puts a lot of work on that and the mayor. But before we bring it before council, maybe a little guidance. I don't mean guidance, may, we need the guidance. But I just think, I didn't agree with what we did tonight, but that's my opinion. I think we didn't vote for the mayor or the clerk treasurer, his people to get a raise. And I didn't vote against the girl not to get a raise, I guess I did. But, uh, I say, I don't know why we give it to one and not the others, especially in the clerk treasurer's office who had minimal salary increase. I think that was wrong. I think Judge Wells is doing a good job and I think his girl is, but I don't think we did the right thing.
I would just like to ditto John's, uh, comments. I'd also like to congratulate Scott Seach again, um, another great accomplishment. Governor of Indiana absolutely knows people here in Beach Grove, business owners and, and, uh, people who dedicate their time here in Beach Grove. Certainly a good representative. Also like to shout out to Brad Meriwether and Tom of the parks. That storm just ravaged us. I know me personally, I had a tree basically split in half and almost bust my house, but, um, very thankful for those guys out really early and picking up Beach Grove. And that's all I got.
I'll just go on, um, DPEW, it was a big job and, uh, we're just starting, I'm sure, into it. Hopefully not, but we got winter coming, so hopefully it won't be as bad as what they're predicting. And, uh, yes, it's a great job the band did. It was great in Scott, too. Since John took care of all the sports, I'll just say fantastic job on the phones. I went there.
Yeah. Who would have thought that was...
But thanks for everyone coming tonight.
Dave, Dave, Dave.
Kathy?
I think Peyton's doing great.
Let me just say this, thanks for coming, thanks for being here. I did not vote to overturn the mayor's decision about anybody's pay increase or decrease. I wanted to make the record clear that the ordinance, the girl's going to get paid. That, that's what I wanted to declare. So that, that's all that was about. I'm not trying to give anyone an increase and take away from anybody else. So if you have questions, why I voted, why I voted, this is why I voted that way. It's, it was, I just wanted to make it right, so that's that. So, and Dave made comment to that. And I think, yes, we can do a better job next year in the pre-budget process. And Ed, you've already spoken about that, Mr. Bell has, about, you know, making that happen. So I, I guess I'm apologizing for the confusion that had transpired tonight. And then, of course, everybody else had to steal all my thunder about the DPEW and I wish Brad were here because I was so impressed with how they did and got all those trees done and up and down. I drive all over this place, Grove and south side, north side, east side, west side. And there are still trees, tons of communities that Beach Grove had gone before I got home from work that day. So I am so happy and so appreciative. So, thank you. Thank you to the police department, the fire department, and everyone that serves the city and all the citizens that live here that make it what it is. Thank you.
Dan?
I just wanted to make a couple announcements. Next Monday is Veterans Day. We will be having a Veterans Day service here at City Hall at 11 o'clock on 11/11, which is next Monday. And then next, a week from Thursday, 11/14, we will be, uh, holding the ribbon cutting ceremony for Main Street. That'll be at 1:00 PM and that'll be here at City Hall also on the steps downstairs.
No other comments from council, ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:45 PM. We meet again on Monday, December 2nd at 7:00 PM. Thank you.